Good evening. Today is Tuesday, September 30th, it's 6:00. And this is a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Trinidad. Would you all please rise for the pleasure of the meetings?
Let your allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we continue on with the agenda, would you please make sure your cellphones are either off or muted? Thank you. Item number one, roll call.
Debono.
Here.
Shu.
Here.
Thurman.
Here.
Trahill.
Here.
Ogletree.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Cregel.
Here.
Item number two, approval of the agenda. Does anybody have motions?
I'm still moved. I thought you were asking for...
Here.
Oh, that's what I said.
There you have a motion in a second.
Okay.
Discussion?
Discussion?
I was going to move to move 5C, the approval of professional services agreement for OnCall Engineering Services with RG and Associates LLC Inc. to miscellaneous business, 8 to become 8E, just so that council could have a chance to ask some questions and understand more of how the staff thinks of these actions.
So there's a motion on the floor?
Second.
No, wait.
You said there's a motion.
The first motion...
You made a motion.
You made a motion to accept it. Ms. Ogletree amended it. So...
Is that correct?
It is correct. There was a motion.
So we vote on amended motion?
Correct.
Disregard the first motion.
Right. Yes, how about a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda per the changes suggested by Councilwoman Ogletree. Thank you.
Is there... okay. Call the vote, please.
Sorry.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trahill?
Yes.
Debono?
Yes.
Cregel? Yes. Item three, policy items and staff reports. Item 3A, presentation of Mike Jolly, CFO of Evergreen Natural Resources regarding oil and gas industry. Mr. Jolly, would you please come forward?
Thank you.
Okay, let's see if we can get this back to working. So, first of all, thank you for inviting me here this evening. This comes about largely because I was asked to give an update to the Board of County Commissioners this morning, and Councilwoman Williamson was not going to allow me to appear before the Board of County Commissioners without also giving simultaneous up to the City Council. By the way, one of the rare opportunities when Councilwoman Williamson can tell me what to do. She's very, very happy to be able to do that. The update itself actually follows a multi-year process that Evergreen has been going through with the Energy Carbon Management Commission. It used to be the COGCC that regulates oil and gas development in Colorado. And the purpose of this multi-year process we've been going through is that the state in 2021 updated their rules, by the way, a process which I agree with, to assure that companies like mine, natural gas and oil operators in the state of Colorado, are capable of providing adequate financial assurance that at the end of the useful life of their fields, they'll be able to plug, abandon, reclaim their wells, and put the property back into original condition. It's a somewhat controversial process, but again, Evergreen was actually fully supportive of that effort. We want to make sure that the community that we operate in, which is both the door community and mine, I have a house in Los Angeles County as well, can be assured that at the end of the process, we'll have restored the land to as near its original condition as the property owners want, and will essentially leave no trace behind. That process is adversarial in the sense that it's conducted like a trap. And significant... or not adversarial to the ECMC. But the significance of that to you is that all the information that was provided is provided under oath, sworn testimony, with evidence, with cross-examination. It's a very rigorous process. And having gone through that process, and I led Evergreen through it myself, a fair number of facts were brought to light that I think people have either forgotten, maybe never knew in the first instance. Certainly at the state level, they didn't realize the impact that Evergreen and the two companies that surround us here, Los Angeles County, have on the community. And it was enlightened. And so what I wanted to do is I've got a couple of bullet points here. This isn't intended as a presentation. I don't have business before the City Council. So we wanted to give you, in just a few minutes, some of the information that you can now find in the public record of the ECMC process and tell you how we are going to assure the community that we operate in that there will be no trace of us once we're gone. And by the way, to also point out how long we intend to continue to be here. So, not intended to exactly read it, but Evergreen's impact and its footprint in Los Angeles County is very substantial. If you draw an outline around our operations, it's about 250,000 acres of land that are, for the most part, then, as developed as we are going to develop them. Meaning that the roads are in place, the pipelines are in place, the water infrastructure is in place. And we would not anticipate going forward that footprint changing very much. There are currently over 2,000 wellbores that we own and operate, seven compressor stations. And we handle over 2 million gallons of water per month, about 75% of which is discharged directly to the surface. All of the water that Evergreen produces, and most people at the state did not know this, is fresh water that meets all agricultural standards. So if you were to drill a water well in the canyons west of Trinidad, we produce from the same interval... we produce gas from the same intervals that most water wells are impacted with. And we've been going through a concerted effort for the last five years to actually increase the amount of water that we can discharge or extract to the surface. We work with the Purgatory Valley Water Commission. We work with ranchers, landowners out there. We try and provide them as much water as we can. And we have over 1,200... we state with Colton Production Pits. We and most of our landowners at Colton Ponds provide water to water out of the canyons. We employ about 140 to 136, 138 if you want to be specific, employees here in Trinidad and that might look across the board, of course, in Raton, New Mexico. For the whole company, there's only five of us that live outside of Los Angeles County or Raton, New Mexico. So our corporate office is five of us. In the last three years, our direct tax revenue to the county is $14 million. That doesn't include the money that we pay in sales tax. It doesn't include vehicle registrations and those other types of fees that go into the community. That's just property tax and a little more tax for our production. And in the next five years, we think that, based on current commodity price, there'll be another 20 million in just the next five years. So our tax impact to the community turns out to be far greater than I think most people at the state level would now. I think Trinidad and certainly the County Commissioners were aware of this, but most people aren't. In the last three years, we've paid... I've got to look at this line. $30 million in production royalties to the property owners and then operating area. And in the next five years, we expect to pay about another $40 million. These are rather substantial amounts, as you can imagine, most of which flow into your community. There are some members, some landowners, who of course don't live in Los Angeles County. We're all aware of that. But for the most part, that's the magnitude of the economic impact. A school board member, the primary school district, recently told me that we account for 54% of their levy. That comes from them. I have not made any attempt to verify that. But I do understand at one point that was as high as 90%. Next three bullet points, of course, are very important to the county. They're equally important to the City Council. We spend about $30 million a year in operating expenses. Councilwoman Williamson happens to be the one who manages this. For us, he can verify those numbers himself. About $30 million a year, just to keep the lights on. And another $10 million or so of capital improvements. So on average, in any given year, we spend about $40 million just in operating expenses up there. Very rarely does any of that money get spent with a vendor outside of Los Angeles County or Raton, New Mexico. And the rare occasion that that happens is usually because there is a piece of equipment, a park or something, that's simply not available to be purchased locally. All of our vendors are local. So we do make a concerted effort, and we have, frankly, for 20-plus years, to spend that money in the community where we also live and work. So when we had this studied recently, our economic impact to Los Angeles County is about $200 million a year. It's the function of the direct money that we spend, the taxes that we pay, and what's called the community multiplier effect, which I think most of you would know about, where $2 invested into the community circulates through the community several times. So our economic impact is fairly substantial. It's much larger for us in Los Angeles County than it is for any other operator in the state and counties in which they operate. It doesn't make us special, but it does make us different. Our relationship with the community is fundamentally different here than what you see or what you would see in many of the other communities around the state and the businesses that they work with. It's a source of great pride for us. And I'll tell this anecdote. Both the Commissioners of the ECMC and senior staff of the ECMC have told us that, in particular, non-government organizations who also appear before them frequently have gone so far as to accuse Evergreen of improprieties because so many of the members of the community and elected representatives, particularly the County Commissioners, will speak out for the industry at legislative hearings, sessions, work sessions being conducted by the ECMC and CDPH. They think we're doing something to bring you out. We say, no, we're not doing anything to bring them out. We live and work with the landowners, with the governments in Los Angeles County. They're coming out representing their own interests, not representing mine. We expect anyone here, except for Mr. Williamson, to come out and represent my interests. You're coming out to represent your own. And it's having an impact. They notice this to the point where they actually break it up. Financial assurance is the main issue. I want to talk about that and what we've done. First bullet point is probably the most important to everyone who's stayed in here. We have third-party auditors, just like the county would have, just like the city would have. We also have third-party auditors who look at our engineering reserves. In other words, it's a third-party company that comes in, looks at the natural gas production estimates that we make. They audit them and they verify them. And nothing to do with me, something that I pay to bill. They testify before the ECMC that the economic life of the field is 35 years from this year. So there's another 35 years of economic potential from that field. They pointed out that in about 2004, when Evergreen won, sold to Pioneer Natural Resources, they estimated that there was about half a trillion cubic feet of producible gas. That is not an insignificant number. Today, that number is about 3/4 of a trillion cubic feet remaining. The number's actually gone up, notwithstanding 20 years of production. And we expect that to frankly continue. Many of the next four bullet points are really for... that we had given to the state and to the county about the ongoing activity. Probably less germane here, but I would again emphasize, it's $10-plus million of new capital dollars that we put into the wells in the field every year. And by the way, we have an inventory of the last 25 years worth of wellbores without drilling another new well in this county, where we continue to do that year over year over year over year. So the process we went through with the state was to then say, okay, this is the impact that you have. How are you going to assure us that at the end of the day, you're not going to leave us with a large plugging liability? And so we went through a process where we mapped each and every well location we have in the field, in terms of the size, the extent of losing, how much fill material would need to be put in, how much knowledge should seed in every aspect of the reclamation process for each of the wells that we have. It's all been submitted to the state. You can Google it yourselves. You can go to the ECMC website and you can see all of it. At this point, Evergreen is probably the most studied operator in the state of Colorado. We've added up what the cost of that would be based on our actual costs. And then they, of course, asked us for that data as well. And so we provided to the state with data from about 1,200 different reclamation operations that we've performed, including 200 complete plugging, abandonment, and reclamation. And we added them all up. We conducted, as I said, evidentiary hearings over an entire year, four different sessions, exhaustive, to where we finally came up with a plan, not quite unique because there is another operator in the state that is following suit, but certainly different than you've ever seen before in Colorado. And our plan is to fund it. So what we've done, what Evergreen has done, is we've created the trust fund, which is no different than a rancher might create for his children or grandchildren past the property or wealthy individuals might create for their children or their grandchildren with their retirement funds. It's just simply a trust. We've created it. Bank of Oklahoma is going to be the trustee. State of Colorado is the beneficiary. And we fund it. And we're going to fund it each and every year as we go forward from this point in time. And it is designed so that in 35 years, it will have $45 million in cash sitting there. The way the trust is set up is that in any year in which we do plugging and abandonment wells, we deduct that amount from what our contribution would be. So if my contribution is a quarter of a million dollars and I do $25,000 worth of plugging, my contribution becomes $225,000. And it simply grows over time to, again, to continue to be there for the state, for the community, to ensure that we essentially leave no trace behind. We also agreed that we have an existing reclamation bond in place. The whole purpose of financial assurance is actually to change that because those bonds really weren't enough. What we told the state we would do is we're going to leave all of our bonds in place until our trust fund has twice the amount of the bond. So our bonds are about $2 million. So they'll stay there for the benefit of the state until we've got $4 million in cash to replace them. Demonstrating, again, to the state, to Los Angeles County, to all of you, our commitment to being here for a long term and make sure that we provide financial assurance that no one here will ever be stuck with a reclamation associated with us. We also agreed to a couple of additional triggers. The state has very strict rules regarding when a well has to be plugged or abandoned and a location reclaimed. We agreed to go over and above those rules. We provided certain voluntary triggers. You can see that there's no technically recoverable reserves remaining. That sort of makes sense. You would think it does. But in fact, we produce a number of wells just to produce water content. Because we're then able to blend that with other water that we produce to make sure that it all meets agricultural-grade standards before it's discharged. So we produce wells just to produce water. So well, it's not otherwise used to support production. That's what those words mean to the state. If it's not used for some other purpose to maintain the operation, we're going to plug it. If there's a mechanical integrity issue, we're going to plug it. And we also agreed that if there's a group of wells that are at least less than economic... we're going to plug and abandon the entire group of wells all at once to make sure that this isn't done in a pathogen measure. I think we are the only operator that received unanimous approval from the ECMC. After four hearings, all of the Commissioners ultimately agreed that this was the best interest of the community. And by the way, it's something we're quite confident because it doesn't really happen. But it happened for us. So what I'll leave you with, and I'm happy to take questions. I'd be happy to come back and do many of those things, is the same thing I left you with. We've gone through this process to make sure that, A, we can continue to be good corporate citizens and operate here in the county for the next three decades plus, and to let you know that we've taken steps today to make sure that your children and your grandchildren are going to be left with the legacy of what we're doing out here today. That's all I have.
Anybody have questions, comments?
I just appreciate a good corporate neighbor. It's very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joy.
Appreciate it. When I taught school, you supplied hundreds of computers for us at this district.
Thank you, Will. Thank you, and you're welcome. We went through this with the county. We went through this with the state. They really don't appreciate, again, what the operators here have done, which is very different. The sheriff came out and pointed out that we provide GPS units for the sheriff's department in the county. Our operational control center in the facility is the backup emergency command center for the county in the event of an emergency or disaster. We have 17 emergency evac Hilo locations out in the counties. We've submitted a beneficial water reuse plan with the support of the volunteer fire districts, particularly Somal, because those production ponds that we have out there that are full of water turn out to be very useful for fighting wildfires. And the sort of list goes on and on. And it's not something we want to spend a lot of time talking about. It's something we just do because we're a corporate citizen. But over the course of times, some people, predominantly those who are not located here in the community, have sort of forgotten the impact that we have. It was not out of the realm of possibility that the state regulations would have put us out of business. So before you do that, you should go look at the impact that we have and how we operate in the community. We're not perfect. There are some people who, of course, have some issues with us, and I appreciate them. But we do the best that we can.
I have one question, if I may.
It's the only opportunity that Aaron gets to ask me questions.
I'm going to take it. Mr. Joy, thanks for being here. Frequently, with the difference between local government and state government, sometimes there's the dispute over severance taxes being disproportionately utilized outside of the area where they're collected. What teeth are in the state's program to ensure that that trust fund, once completed, comes to this specific area? How do we ensure that that money isn't going to be used outside of the area hypothetically?
You're suggesting that the state might rate a general fund, for example?
I'm sure that would never happen, would it?
It's something, obviously, we're concerned about because it's Evergreen's money. And so the state has no right to ever actually touch the money. They're the beneficiary of a trust. So it doesn't go into a common fund. It's never paid over to the state until we fail to do something and therefore breach our financial assurance agreement and violate the terms of the trust. So the money goes from Evergreen to corporate fiduciary, not the state. It's invested and reinvested. We actually control those investment decisions. And unless and until there is a breach of state law and the state has to step in and perform the plugging and abandonment, they have no ability to reach into those funds. So in other words, it's not in their hands. It's in the hands of the Bank of Oklahoma.
Okay, that answers my question.
Thank you, Mr. Joy. Wait, don't go away.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. I don't have a question. But, you know, I know the impact that Evergreen has had on Trinidad. Every time I go to a fundraiser, it's... Evergreen's always there, and I appreciate that. But I was thinking while you were talking that every good partnership, each partner has to give to make the partnership valid and good and prosperous. So I'm asking you to tell us if there's anything this body can do for you. Please don't hesitate. We're not saying, well, do it. Please, please don't hesitate if there's something that you need or any issues that you have. I know the county has more of a... more of a hold on what you do because you're not in the city limits. We want to do everything we can to support you.
You do, actually. The thing that's probably the most important to us into the next 35 years, frankly, is to continue to have a strong community that's able to keep its young people living here, working here, and able to afford it. The single most important asset that I have is that 170 employees that work for us. And we draw from this community. If those young people are not here, then we have a real problem. And there's a lot you can do to aid and assist in that. You don't need to train them for us. You just need to be able to provide a place where they want to be and can afford it.
That sounds fair enough. Thank you, sir. Item number four, petitions or communications oral or written. Just brief to remind you. The petition, the oral communications are limited to five minutes. Mr. Downs does our timekeeping for us, and he will remind you when there is one minute left. Our first speaker is Ray A. Miller and friend, and his subject is drainage.
I appreciate the city came out and they did put some asphalt down and fixed some areas up there at that Cougar Canyon. And so they did, they did quite a bit. They... because we only got two inches of asphalt. We're supposed to have four. So they brought it up and they corrected the curves. They fixed that area down there at the end of the street, Bloom Street. The only thing that didn't get done was there's some drainage to try to get put in. There are storm drains on the road that was never built. They put in the fire hydrants. They put in storm drains. They put in everything except the road. So if they just dig that out a little bit further, and I got pictures here, and they dig it out a little bit, maybe another 20 feet, they'll hit the storm drain. Although there might be some sediment in there. And I get some drainage down here because in the wintertime, when everything, the water gets in there and it freezes, it becomes a real slippery slide out there. Turn the corner and all that. The other one is up there on the main road where I pointed out more than once. And all I have to do is cut out... all they would have to do is take some cement cutters and cut that cement and then just dig out some drainage. The one side is already dug out. It's already eroded out. But the other side, you could just cut and dig it out. It wouldn't take that hard to fix the top of that road. Would be fairly easy to do that. And the guys came out on September the eighteenth, or I mean August eighteenth, I looked at that, and it looked pretty positive they were able to do something. I'm just kind of hoping that it kind of gets done before winter. The other thing I was going to talk about is we got a weed cutter comes out there. About every three months or every couple of months, he's out there, Western Contracting or something like that. And this guy cuts about five foot of weeds, not the whole lot. It's got to be for fire mitigation. That's the only thing I can think of why the guy cuts these weeds. But most of the time, he chews up the concrete, the curves are all chewed up. I've got pictures of what he's doing, or not, he's tearing it up pretty good. Now, I can't understand why he's out there, and then he doesn't clean anything up, the weeds go everywhere. And if you get those big gully storms, you know, the big heavy-duty rainstorms, there's no weeds there to hold the soil together. And of course, when he turns the tractor, tears out all that, so it becomes a real mud pit out there in some of these areas where this guy's cutting these weeds. I don't know if the city is looking at, once he gets done with his, every couple of months he cuts these weeds, they go out there and look at what he's doing, or if there's any kind of a fallout behind this or not. This guy's on some kind of contract, he's been out there for years. But he makes a bigger mess than he fixes, as far as I'm concerned. I got the pictures here, and you guys can see what's going on. But I did talk to Joey Amato the other day about the Cougar Canyon lots, the property lots, because at one time they were going to auction them off, which never happened. And she said, you know, every time they get something that is numerous and buying it, when they figure out what a debacle that thing is, and what Mr. Rico pointed out years back, is it's going to run about three to four thousand bucks to figure out who owes what to who, and who's in charge of what, and all that kind of stuff out there, who didn't do what, or whatever. But maybe they might have to spend that kind of money, that we can auction those lots off. I was going to bid on the one next to me, that'll keep some Californians from moving in next to me. You know, I'd like to do that. But they'll say that thing went dry in two thousand and eight, it's now twenty twenty-four, so there's sixteen years worth of back taxes, which is about fifty thousand bucks a lot, forty-eight, fifty thousand dollars a lot. I don't know if anybody's going to ever pay those back taxes. But they could be auctioned off. There's four hundred of the lots up there. I mean, the fire hydrants are in, the drainage is in, the sewer system's in, the roads aren't there, but, you know, whatever, I just, you know, I was going to bid on the one next to me. I've always, I got the money set aside for it. Whatever. But I appreciate the city coming out and doing that asphalt for me. That was a good deal, okay? And I appreciate your help on this.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. As you know, Mr. Rigger is gone, so you're in contact with Mr. Valentine. Mike Valentine, the gentleman...
I know, I'm in a bit of trouble. I know. So you got a, are you still hiring the city manager then, or still out, or?
Council is searching.
I guess the police chief one's still out, too, that's still out?
That's another subject. Bill Rico, Colorado Thirty Group?
Good evening, Mayor Rico, here's the city councilman, Mr. Valentine. I was recently asked to become a member of the Colorado Thirty Group. This invitation is actually by, is by invitation only, just to let you know. Colorado Thirty Group is intricately connected to all branches of the military in the state of Colorado. The information that I gave you, passed out earlier, will give you a little more detail of what this group does. It was formed in nineteen seventy-eight with thirty members, but has expanded to over a hundred and fifty with membership from retired military, businesses, and elected officials, current and former elected officials. The purpose was to become a connection for all U.S. military, Army, Navy, Marines, Air Force, and the new Space Command, and the local communities with the willingness to spend time and effort on national security, defense issues, and concerns in local military installations. Colorado Thirty Group works with area commanders to assist them in fulfilling their missions and roles by creating understanding and education between military and civilian leadership throughout Colorado. I accepted the invitation because I thought the city of Trinidad and Los Angeles County and here they seat at the table, and my concerns for our military and especially Pinon Canyon. Sometimes, we civilians, we feel insulated, we feel insulated from what goes on in the military and in the world. We hear issues about Russia, China, North Korea, and others. But do we really understand what these adversaries' intentions are? I wanted to become better informed on these issues. The world is a tinderbox, and we are seeing foreign and domestic idealism spreading. In short, I will periodically report with this what this group is doing as we connect with military, with the military at some of the highest levels. Next week, I will be attending a special nineteen eleven event hosted by Governor Paulson, the Denver mayor, Mike Johnson, and they will have three special presenters at that event. One presenter is going to be H.R. McMaster. He was the National Security Advisor from twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen, and is a retired U.S. Army Lieutenant General. Jeremy Bash, Chief of Staff, Secretary of Defense, and Director of the CIA from two thousand nine to twenty thirteen, NBC News, and MSNBC National Security Analyst, Thomas Anderson, who's a co-founder and former director of CSIS Transnational Threats Project. So like I said, these are some of the things, and the information I provided with you show will tell you some of the other things that how we will interact with the military and our local communities, not only in Colorado Springs, but Denver and all over the state of Colorado. So periodically, I may come back and let you guys know what, what we're doing. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Virginia Jimenez wants to talk about the Commons.
Hello. I'm Virginia Jimenez, I'm the treasurer for the Corazon de Trinidad Creative District. And we, we, the Creative District, and also Historic Main Street have been having some conversations with city employees and Councilwoman Oglesry about the management of the Commons. And since tonight on your agenda, you will be voting about the Commons Oversight Board, I figured this would be a good time to come and talk about that thing. So my comments are related to the Commons itself as a space, as a building, but also about how it is managed as a facility. And, and I don't remember what else I was going to say. Oh, I'm sorry, about the Creative Main Street facilitator position and how that relates to the Commons. The Commons is a very large space. It's beautiful. It has its challenges because it's an old building. For example, the roof leaks, and we probably need new windows. And the only reason that I, those things concern me is because we have a lot of expensive equipment in that building, and also if I have an art exhibit, the last thing I want is the roof leaking on, on somebody's art. And to just clarify, it only leaks during rainstorms, of course, and it's around the skylight in the back. Otherwise, everything seems to be fine. And as it, as those type of things relate to the Main Street, the Creative Main Street facilitator position, I do not believe that the job description the city has put out for this position is realistic, because you are asking this person to do two and a half jobs. And the only reason I say that is because I've been putting in a twenty hours a week minimum to assist Margie when she was in this position, and now Marty Hackett, who is over there working on those things. And I'm a volunteer. And so I'm doing what is necessary to make sure that that space has a good reputation in our community, because that money right now comes to the Creative District. We're also talking with the city employees about how that may change in the future. So the thing that I specifically would like to point to is that if this person, the Creative Main Street facilitator, is expected to be liaison for three boards, two city boards, and one nonprofit organization, which would be the Creative District, they then are also expected to establish space to create as an essential asset for Trinidad's economic growth, as well as assist in managing the Commons by maintaining regular office hours, coordinating cleaning and maintenance services, and acting as a community liaison for the facility. As if three boards, managing three boards is not enough, they must also assist in managing this building, which I personally believe is really a stretch for one person to do within forty hours a week. The other thing that is also challenging about this is that it says assists in managing the space to create Commons. Who are they assisting? That's like my big question here. And we are, in our conversations, we have also discussed what that might look like. In April, Margie Ferndali applied for a CHAFA grant specifically to hire a person who can help facilitate things going on at the Commons. And that grant was received. It is going to the city specifically for that thing, so that is something that we are discussing. I don't know all the specifics of that grant myself, because it is a grant that went for the city. I was, I only see things that are related to the Creative District, of course, in my capacity.
One minute, ma'am. Sorry.
No, that's okay, thank you. And so I think it's really important that we have that grant, that's exciting, but we need to have one person who is in charge of that building in order for it to be smooth, in order for this particular position not to be overwhelmed. You can't sit at your office, you can't have a fishbowl office and expect to write grants. That's one of the things on here. Writing and monitoring grants and applications, that by itself could be a full-time job, right? So you can't sit in a fishbowl office and then also stand up to help or speak to every person that comes in. It's just very challenging. And the next thing you know, you spent your day talking to people in the community, but that grant is due. So I just want to say that I think this is a little much, and I do really recommend and encourage the city with that CHAFA grant and in our discussions. We are, these things are in the works, and I'm excited about that. I just wanted to come and say these things to you as a Creative District board member who has been with my, my free time, filling in the gaps as necessary. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Dan Rosetti, work session on Central Park.
Good evening, folks. I'm here about a work session, that's held a month ago, about hiring an assistant public works director. I really don't see how that's going to work when you, the public works director doesn't know what he's doing now. How are you going to hire somebody to be under him to do that job? And it was said that he was going to take care of engineering, but the city has put out for a standby engineering firm. I just don't understand it. And if you do hire someone that knows what to do as an assistant, I guarantee you within six months to a year, he's going to have his hands around the public works director's neck like the building inspector did, the one that City All trucks sweep under the road.
Rosetti, please watch your...
Ma'am, it's my time, it's...
But you have to be respectful.
I am being respectful. I have not said a name. This is my time, Les, am I right? Is this not freedom of speech?
It is, Mayor.
It is, ma'am. And I get another thirty seconds for the interruption. So that's the other deal. How can, you got, you had one man and had three departments. He handled three departments. Now you have one man for each department. This man, he knew what the job was when he applied for it. If he can't handle it, split it up with the other superintendents. I was always told on the street, Mr. Schu said it at the meeting, we don't have enough help on the street, but you know what we're told on the street? We're lazy, or the foreman doesn't know what he's doing. He's not hard enough on you. But you know what? Maybe that's what's wrong at City Hall. Maybe the people at City Hall don't know. Maybe the boss ain't hard enough on them. You know, we have one superintendent, comes to work at nine-thirty, leaves at nine-thirty, ten o'clock, leaves three-thirty, four o'clock. How do they let that happen? And it's been happening. You know, I'm just, it's just irritating to see City Hall has their own rules, the street has their rules. Mr. Downs said it, when you get a, when you go for the new city manager, are we going to have, as Les Downs called it, the Mike Valentine clause to hire someone? Watch the meeting, Les, you did say that. I mean, they make up their own rules here, and that's not right. Two superintendents were just picked up off the streets and put in an office. The jobs weren't even put on, posted. Just give them the job. How's that work? It's not fair. And I'm tired of it, and I'm bringing it out, whether they like it or not. So now, since police chief was brought up, I brought that up, what, four weeks ago, on a Tuesday? That Friday, they put out, let's hire a consultant to hire a police chief. Why do you need a consultant? Does H.R. not know what they're doing? Or is it they don't want to hire the person? And nobody has the balls to say that. Is that's what's going on? Now, you have a man, and he's done this job for eight months. He gets up here, you tell him, you're doing a great job, you're doing a fine job. And then we're going to hire some, a consultant to look for a police chief? That's disgusting. That is totally disgusting. Just because he doesn't kiss the asses at City Hall that he's supposed to.
Please don't swear, Mr. Rosetti, please don't swear. And you have one minute, plus an additional fifteen seconds.
Yes.
Okay.
You're going to say asses is a bad word. Let me bring that up. When I brought my boss that fired me, said it in a meeting, and I was told during that meeting, ass is not a bad word because it's in the Bible. That's what I was told. That's why I said it tonight, because I knew you'd say something. So is it or is it not? I don't know. All I know is I got fired for cussing. Other people don't. It's called unbecoming of a city employee. You had two guys could throw blows in the room downstairs, and they get three days off with pay, without pay? Not, police aren't even called? Why is that? People should be accountable for that. They held it from you people until it hit the newspaper. Is that right?
Fifteen more seconds.
I'm done.
Margie Fernandez, oh, sorry for nailing, and there was no subject on yours.
We're just waiting to hear if we're permitted.
She just waiting to hear, she's sorry.
Oh, okay, no.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's fine, not a problem. Easy to correct, Margie.
Thank you.
Okay, I have one written communication. It's from Mr. Arco. I'm not going to read all of it, because he missed the six amendments to the Constitution. It'll be on record if you want to get a copy. "August twentieth, twenty twenty-four, Dear Marion City Council, City of Trinidad, you may want to read the first five amendments to the Constitution of the United States of America before considering ordinance changes presented on page seven of the August sixteenth, twenty twenty-four edition of the Chronicle News. Thank you for all you do, Robert Arco, Member, Formal Charter, Commission nineteen ninety-three." And just for your information, all the amendments are regarding free speech, well-regulated malicious, so that's for everybody. Item number five, consent agenda approval. Item five A, approval of the regular meeting minutes of August twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Item five, the appointments to the number one Corazon de Trinidad Historic Main Street Board. We had two applicants, Margie Ferndali and Molly Snook. Item two, Historic Preservation Commission, Lisa Glorioso. Item three, Housing Authority, Ruben B. Hill. And number four, Planning, Zoning, and Variance Commission, John Norris. Item C was referred to miscellaneous business. Item five D, approval of bills to total one million, two hundred ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars and thirty cents. Item five E, approval of payroll from August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four through September thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
So who?
Second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trinhell?
Yes.
Olutree?
Yes.
Lamson?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes. Item six A, public hearing for consideration of the Norman's Amendment, Section one dash sixteen, fees for inspection, copying, and photographing of public records of Chapter one, General Provisions, Article one in general of the Code of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, regarding production of public records. The hearing is now open. Any comments, questions about...
My questions were answered only last discussion.
Anyone else got questions?
No questions, ma'am.
Okay. Recap for us, just to care.
The General Assembly, General Assembly's Legislative Council adjusts the maximum fee that can be collected every five years for the searching and retrieval of public records. We were previously at thirty dollars. This will increase the fee to forty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents per hour. When that is necessary, the first hour is waived, and if the forty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents is the amount that the Legislative Council has adjusted it to by statute. So the city has to modify our policy in order to charge that dollar amount.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing is now closed. Item six A one, second reading of... That's okay. Six A one, second reading of an ordinance amending section one dash sixteen, fees for inspection, copying and photographing of public records of chapter one, general provisions, article one in general of the Code of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, regarding production to public records. Do I have a motion?
So, move.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote, please?
Williamson?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Trill?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
DeBono?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes. Item six B, public hearing for consideration of an ordinance adopting rules of decorum to supplement the Code of Conduct and Code of Ethics in chapter two, Administration, Article seventeen of the Trinidad Municipal Code. The hearing is now open. Any comments, questions? From the Dave's? Okay, the hearing is closed. Item six B one, second reading of an ordinance adopting rules of decorum to supplement the Code of Conduct and Code of Ethics in chapter two, Administration, Article seventeen of the Trinidad Municipal Code. I have a, do I have a motion?
So, move.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote, please?
Ogletree?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trill?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
DeBono?
Yes.
Williamson?
Ah, yes.
Griego?
Yes. Item six C, public hearing for the consideration of an ordinance amending section two dash fifteen of chapter two, Administration, Article three of the Trinidad Municipal Code regarding council meetings. The hearing is now open. Any questions, comments?
I have one, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Just, I just have any clarification on this. So, in the rules of decorum, um, there's a statement and they're saying council members may give direction to city manager of, uh, or city attorney during their report for any matter that has arisen during petitions and communications. But no discussion of these items would take place. And placing it before petitions and communications? Do we have some type of way we can address if there's concerns that may arise during petitions and communication?
Aren't we supposed to answer that at the end of the meeting? Didn't we set a position for that? When the city manager has his review?
So, I'm sorry, I was a little thrown off because I heard rules of decorum and I thought we were talking about the earlier item. But, but if you would please ask the question again, I'm sorry.
Okay, so my question is...
I was a little thrown off.
So, my, am I, is the placement of council reports below the policy items and staff reports?
Yes, sir.
Before the petitions and communication? In our rules of decorum, it states that council members may give direction to the city manager or city attorney during their report for any matter that they may have arisen during petitions and communications, but no discussion of these items shall take place. So, is that, when, if we have a concern with it, or is that...
So, I, that is a good point. It is a practical matter. I don't think that was, I mean, I wasn't, you know, thinking of that when, when this was done. But I would say that any matter that arises during petitions and communications that, that raises a legitimate concern that we need to be, you know, concerned with, we will take as, especially if one of you says anything, right? Even though you can't answer, you know, people who are speaking up here, of course, for meeting brevity, but we will take that as an inquiry into a matter. And you can also always reach out to one of us if you feel like a matter is, is important. It may be kind of, and Audrey's up here, I want her to be able to speak. But, um, we will know if there's a matter that we need to address.
So, um, city council has the option of amending the ordinance on second reading. And since we've just approved the rules of decorum, it may be better to just go ahead and amend this ordinance so that your reports follow petitions and communications?
Yeah.
I agree with that, yeah.
So, presentation of petitions, written rule would be second. And council reports would be, of B. And then, council reports would be C. Right, those two would be flipped?
They'd be...
Here.
Right.
It would be flipped. B and C would be flipped. Good. Good call. Good catch.
Okay, any other questions, comments? So, Mr. Downs, how do I, do we amend that?
Please.
Ordinance?
It would be, um, a motion as amended.
Okay. Okay, do, I need a... Okay, we're still in the hearing mode, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any other comments? Questions? Hearing is closed. Item C one, second reading of an ordinance as amended. Amended section two dash fifteen six of chapter two, Administration, Article three of the Trinidad Municipal Code regarding city council meetings. Do I have a motion?
Motion to accept that with the... End of tour.
So, second?
Second.
Call the vote, please?
Trill?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
DeBono?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Look, just for a matter of clarification, didn't we, well, we have an issue with some, when the people come up and do that and, and they ask questions like for the, pardon me. Don't, aren't we, weren't we supposed to have the city manager at the end of the meeting answer some of that? If there was a question, I mean, just an example.
Why?
The drainage system, just, I mean, I don't wanna bring it up, but would, would he come up to answer that?
My recollection is, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but it would be answered at the next meeting.
Okay, well, I wasn't sure, but I thought we were supposed to have that to be where a person could answer, you know, have his questions answered.
Yes, absolutely. And that, but that is the rule. So that we don't have to, you know, give like an unprepared response or, or, you know, not have all the information. So, the, the general rule that we have abided by is that we will answer inquiries during petitions and communications at the next meeting.
Yeah, just so everybody knows, to clarify that, because everybody wants to...
Right.
...make a comment and ask, they get their answers.
Right, and we just try to go along with the general rule of not responding at that meeting. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, we voted on that, correct? Okay.
Yeah.
You're kinda long-winded, I think. Item six D, public hearing for consideration of an ordinance repealing section two dash sixty point one, space to create commons oversight board from the Trinidad Municipal Code. The hearing is now open. Questions, comments, Miss Ogletree?
I, um, excuse me, and following up on what Miss Minnis was talking about related to the commons. And after a recent meeting with Creative District Main Street and Cristo Russell, who's going to be operating the restaurant and the city manager, Ms. Garrett, and Michelle Neffrep was there as well. I, it became clear that we do need some oversight of how this facility is going to be used. But the current ordinance that created this board is, um, it has a bunch of things in there that we've already done that put, that gave this board responsibilities that have been taken care of. Some that still remain. And what, I'm not opposed to us repealing it, but I would like to have a focused work session on all of this so that we can decide as a council, what sort of oversight we think is appropriate at this point. And speaking with Ms. Garrett as well about this, she pointed out that former councilwoman Michelle Miles had been the one who had spearheaded having an oversight board in the beginning because of financial, the financial aspects of operating a facility that we are charging rent for and just making sure that city money is, is being carefully and efficiently used. I think that's a valid point. I think that we should look at it again. So, I will fill out one of my council requests so that we can have a work session on it. Thank you.
Mr. Ogletree?
I have nothing. No questions?
No questions.
Well, this is a case of after thinking about this. So, I'm kind of in a quandary because the ordinance, as it sits now, isn't applicable, correct? So, do we get rid of that ordinance and start fresh?
We don't have a board. That board is, there's nobody on it anymore.
Oh, okay.
And I think the usefulness of it has passed. But there are aspects of the reasons for why we had that in the first place that still exist. And without this in our ordinance, we, as far as I know, we don't have anything in our ordinances that refer to space to create or anything about it. I may be wrong about that, but I think that's correct. So, I think it'd be good for us to have something about it to make sure that it's operated in a way that we are all comfortable with, the public is all comfortable with, and that's my opinion.
Okay. So, there not being a board, are, are you okay with this ordinance going forward? Okay, good, good, good. This, this repeal.
So, are we, do we have a weak point by having, well, the board's not seated right now anyway? So, it would be who has to get this accomplished as soon as possible because we have renters in there and we have potential renters.
I, it's my feeling that it would be good to have a work session quickly. And I think staff agrees.
Any other questions? Hearing is closed. Item D, one, second reading of an ordinance repealing section two dash sixty dash one, space to create commons oversight board from the Trinidad Municipal Code. I need a motion?
So, move.
Second.
Call the vote, please?
Williamson?
Yes.
DeBono?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Trill?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes. Item six E, public hearing for consideration of an ordinance amending chapter four, animals, article one, under general provisions, sections four dash three, keeping hogs in the city of the Code of the City of Trinidad to include all livestock. The hearing is now open.
Mayor, members of council, as you'll recall, we spoke about this previously. And currently, our ordinances lack language about, um, people's ability to keep actual livestock in the city limits. And more than one time, we've had horses that have peered on properties that, um, really, there's not even the land area, let alone, you know, that proximity to residences, it's, there's not enough land area for that. With the exception of residential estate, this ordinance proposes to allow a maximum of two horses within property that's owned residential estate. That's fifteen thousand square foot properties. And, um, aside from that, other livestock would not be allowed in the city limits. The only exception would be miniature buck-bellied pigs. And I don't think they're as popular as they were once upon a time, but we've left that one to there.
Who says city life isn't sexy? Sorry, sorry, don't mean to hurt them.
While we're on, uh, fodder? They, now, is that property big enough for the two horses that are there?
So, that property, uh, okay. The horses right now are prestating the ordinance that prohibits the horses. However, um, a couple of things, probably it's not large enough to have the horses on anyhow for them to have the proper exercise and what have you. Secondly, um, I would anticipate that neighbor complaints about smell and what have you will cause those horses to have to be moved to appropriate property.
I was just kinda curious, because they have a corral there and everything.
Mm, I saw.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Hearing is closed. Item six E, second reading of an ordinance amending chapter four, animals, article one, general provisions, sections four dash three, keeping hogs in the city of the Code of Cit, the City of Trinidad to include all livestock. Do I have a motion?
So, move.
Second.
Call the vote, please?
Trill?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
DeBono?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes. Item seven, we have no unfinished business. Item eight, miscellaneous business. Eight A, special event permit application. Malvinus Spirituous filed by Brick City Roller Derby at two oh four South Chestnut Street on September seventh, twenty twenty-four. And I see we, you don't need me. If we have questions, you can come in, but you can sit.
Okay.
I need a motion?
So, move.
Second.
Second. I have a question before we call the further vote. There were two fails on inspections for the exit signs and the outlet covers. Have those been repaired at Fort Woodton?
Yes, Mayor, they have.
They have?
They have. Yes, sir. Okay.
Sents relief, too.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Call, yes?
Question. Who between Fort Woodton and Skatland is responsible, or the Roller Derby organization is responsible to enforce the labor laws? Uh, I think that that would fall to our, uh, organization, Brick, Brick City Roller Derby. We have individuals there checking IDs to make sure that it's not served to anybody underage. I mean, I just assumed it was our responsibility, but we've been being careful about that. I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Okay. Are any of the people that in charge of the alcohol tips certified?
Um, I believe we do have one person who did, yes, yeah.
Any other questions?
As a, as a general, uh, question, Les, is it, it is not a requirement that all employees be tip certified?
That's correct.
But it is the preference, or is that...
That also is correct, yes. Absolutely, that's right. It, it's not a requirement, but it is...
How, how long does that process, just out of curiosity?
You know, I'm not sure.
It all depends. Because I, I had to be tip certified when I was in nonprofit. Tom Davis does it here in town, I don't know if he still does, but it's almost a full day.
I would just say, potentially, maybe if it's an ongoing situation, that might be something to consider, but...
It's a good idea.
Yes.
And you guys do a lot, so it might be helpful to have as many tip certificates as you can.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments?
I would just say, thanks for bringing that to town.
Thank you.
Yes, and get those infernal outlaws, I've been mentioning it every morning. Purple rain.
We've grown so much that we have enough people that I am not playing this time.
No, your daughter is, though.
No?
No?
No, we got a bunch of new people playing.
Yeah, September seventh is the next one, right?
Come out and see us, it's, it's a lot of fun.
Okay. Call the vote, please?
DeBono?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trill?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes. Item eight B, um, consideration of a joint meeting with Los Anamis County Commissioners to discuss Pinon Canyon Maneuver Sites Request for White Paper. I have some handouts and I've got copies for Mr. Downs.
Thank you.
And the reason I asked for this as an agenda item is because we discussed this once. We decided not to continue with the process. But let me explain why I'm asking for it. I'll give you my coffee, sir. Okay. Give one to Les, please.
I'll give it to him with the, yeah, I guess so.
Okay. So, I was down at, um... Okay, got it? Okay, I was at Pinon Canyon on the twenty-sixth. We had a, they have a semi-annual, uh, get-together down there where they invite just everybody from the community to go down there and observe what they're doing, how they are being good stewards of bond and flora, and what their, what their goals were... good stewards of bond and flora, and what their, what their goals were, what they're trying to achieve. So this, we, we did the regular community meeting and then thereafter, I was, I and Mr. Rico, because he's a green jacket with the, with the Army, were asked to sit into a meeting. These, these business cards that I gave, gave you, if you look at them, they're two individuals flew in from Washington, DC. Dale Anderson, who is the Chief of Staff, and Michael Chirico, who is Deputy Chief of Staff and National Security Advisor for Congressman Lamborn. So what I have come to find out, the reason that there's more information on this, is because I found out, I didn't know ahead of time, that Mr. Congressman Lamborn is the Chairman of the Strategic Forces Subcommittee and also a member of the Tactical Air and Land Forces Subcommittee. He is not running for reelection. So our, our window of opportunity is very limited to get funding for the moving of the Kinder Morgan gas pipe. So what it is, all those copies that I have given you are copies of what the Army has done so far, what they, what the reports they've made, and they, is actually part of the white papers itself here. It's, if you see Multi-Government Agencies White Paper, Pinion Canyon Maneuver Site. So what Mr. Chirico, Chirico, I have a hard time pronouncing that, but he's saying that we were told that the Army, because of the expense of the defense budget now, would not pay thirty-two million dollars to get this pipeline moved. However, Mr. Chirico has advised us that the national defense budget is upwards of nine hundred and sixty-three billion dollars. So thirty-two million isn't a huge, it's a huge figure to us, not for the defense budget. We, Pinion Canyon has the best chance of getting that money allocated to move that pipeline if Congressman Lamborn is still on these committees. His term ends twenty-twenty-seven. So I also asked why a white paper, why does the city of Trinidad need to support this or submit the white paper in approval of what they're wanting to do? It is illegal, it's not illegal, it's, it's a requirement of the Army, any military service, to make sure that you have support of surrounding communities anytime there is a change in the maneuver site, or for that matter, any port or any military installation. So that's why this is important. If you read on the last, there's also a letter from General David Doyle. I met, uh, General, bless you, General Doyle several times, and he, he points out the reasons why he feels this is needed. The increased capabilities of the site are needed because then what happens is you have other branches of the military using Pinion Canyon Maneuver Site for training. And I asked the gentleman, Mr. Anderson and Mr. Chirico from, they flew in specifically to talk to us that day. But what they have told us and what we as civilians do not understand, even though the country is not included or participating in any foreign wars, what happens like with Iran and, no, I'm sorry, Ukraine and Russia, and now Israel, the military has to send enforcements close to that area. They are not participating in, but they have to be in the general area just in case something happens. So what's happening now, they cannot train these soldiers fast enough to keep the troop rotation going. So it, to me, it shed a whole new light on the urgency of getting this white paper back to Fort Carson and specifically Pinion Canyon. I've asked for a vote because I, I, I respect that we spoke about this once before, but I feel that the information that I garnered at that meeting is important enough for us to reconsider it and to see if council would be agreeable to meeting with county commissioners to see if we can get together and do, the county has to do a white paper and so do we. So I'm wanting to see if you would all be agreeable to have a meeting with the county commissioners and to continue on with the effort to submit a white paper on support of the moving of the gas pipe. So that's it. Any questions?
Where, where does the gas pipe need to be moved?
So if you see imparting your paperwork, I know that the, if you look at this, these are, are numbered, but if you look at this one diagram, that Kinder Morgan pipeline runs not quite halfway through the Pinion Canyon Maneuver Site. So they cannot do any maneuvers or any training, any, I don't know what the boundary is from that pipeline, but they can't do any maneuvers. So the size of the equipment they use and the artillery they use is very limited. So they, Colonel Oxenbaum, who is the new commander of the garrison, told me that we would have maybe Air Force, Navy, Marines come to Pinion Canyon. It's just, we're being able to utilize this maneuver site to its capabilities. Right now, it's limited. So I'm merely asking for approval from council to meet with the, the county commissioners in a special session to discuss their feelings and if any questions. These gentlemen from Washington, DC would be willing to zoom in to our meeting if we had any questions about it. But it, it was very interesting. My whole outlook on the project and what we have to do has changed substantially since I got some information from these gentlemen. Any questions? I don't know if we need to, I imagine we, we need to vote on it.
I, I have some comments and some concerns that are the same as they were the last time, which is that I, I don't have a problem if, if we have determined that our city wants us to, to support this because we represent this city, to say that we're in favor of it. What I don't understand, though, and I never have understood, is why it would be appropriate for the city of Trinidad and/or the Los Anamis County to make representations to a congressional committee about why it's necessary and what, what could happen. All that is information we're getting from the Army. So I think, I think it would be appropriate if they presented to us, here's why we want to do that, and we say, sure, we, we, you know, got the sense of our community and they're behind us, or no, they aren't, but I'm not, I'm not personally opposed to it. I just think I have never understood that, why they would ask us to do that. Did you get any more?
Yes, so I, I got a statement. And it says, "White papers are a way the government can present policy preferences before it introduces legislation. Publishing a white paper tests public opinion on controversial policy issues and helps the government gauge its probable impact." So it's just, it's the government's way of asking for support.
I looked down the road and I think, okay, let's say there's some congressional inquiry where they take testimony. Are they going to call the city, the mayor of the city of Trinidad and say, you said this, you know, what's your evidence for that? This is what they asked us to say, you know, that's all we could say. And I don't understand why it's not sufficient for us, assuming that we have community support for it, to say, yes, we support what you want to do. We'll put that in writing if that's what we need. But I don't understand us preparing a white paper.
So the white paper is not a large document. It's very simple from what I've been told. I'm only telling you what I learned, okay? I'm not asking you to support the issuance of a white paper. I'm just merely asking that you, we have a joint meeting with county commissioners at that time. What I heard, you will hear from these people.
And I agree, everything they said when we met with them way back when is great. All of it is great. I don't have a problem with it. I just don't understand the, the ask to the city of Trinidad, other than, yes, we like it, or no, we don't.
I worked at Pinion Canyon for, for years.
Excuse me, sir. I'm sorry, you can't.
I know what's going on here with the Pinion Canyon. I'm sorry, we don't allow. Okay, okay, I'm sorry. Thank you, sir, I'm sorry. I worked there for years, it's a mess. Understood, thank you.
I'm all understood, isn't it? Mr. Mueller, I'll talk to you after, is that okay? All right, thank you, because I know you have input, we civilians don't. I just ask you that you come to the meet, that you're in agreement with the meeting.
I'm okay with that, but if the end game is that at that meeting, we're going to be asked to prepare a white paper, I still am going to need to know why that's appropriate.
And hopefully that question will be answered. Anybody else?
Not opposed to the meeting, but it may not change the outcome.
I just can't understand why we're involved in a pipeline that belongs to, doesn't even belong to us that they have to move. I mean, it's silly. It's a government, well, it's not our property.
No, it's not.
It's a government, put it there, they, they move it if they want the money for it to do it.
Understood, but my.
And that doesn't have any bearing on the community itself.
But in a way it does, because.
The Army's going to move it, pay for it.
Exactly, but.
But why are we having to say we go to?
Even when they come down here for maneuvers, even though.
I understand that.
Okay, that's.
I mean, I'm not saying, understand what you're saying.
Well, and I think in all honesty, without them, without them coming to answer direct questions.
That's what I'm asking you.
Right. So I think that's where we'll get the clarification. If they're actually show up and ask us for their, if they're looking for support, ask, you know, directly. So, but it seems like, even on the last time that this occurred, they were just, they didn't, they didn't come.
Right.
And, and I think that would have made a stronger case if they would have come and said, you know, hey, we're looking for this and this is what we need for you, so we could ask the direct questions to them instead of bypassing. But this meeting, if they're willing to attend, I would support it.
But you don't, and I understand, I'm just asking for a meeting. But what you don't understand is these two gentlemen flew in from Washington, DC, thinking that somebody other than myself would be there, that council would be there, and you would get your questions answered then.
But those questions should be asked in public.
Mayor, could I interrupt, please? And I just want to say that I, I think I understand what council is saying, and that is mayors keep going into this kind of like magic bubble and come out and understand everything. And it just seems like this is what Mayor Rico was doing too. And I really, in order to supplement the record, you need to hear from someone from the Army coming in here and, and asking from you what they are wanting. And right, I mean, I don't mean to speak for all of you, but I think this is what is being said, and you need to be able to ask them questions. If there was going to be a financial cost, you need to be able to develop the record rather than, and I understand you're asking for a joint meeting with the county commissioners, but somebody really needs to be there at some point, either at this joint meeting or certainly at a meeting of city council, I think, to answer questions and say, this is what we're doing, this is what we pledged to you, why we're doing, what we're doing, and not just kind of mysteriously and like fourth-hand trickle-in supporting documents for a mysterious ask.
Excuse me, I have a question.
Sure.
With all respect, Les.
Yes, ma'am.
These, all this information I gave myself. I just wanted to lay the foundation for why I'm asking you to come back and relook at this request for a white paper. So I'm just telling you what I was told, you know, they are more than willing, I don't know if they'll be there in person, but they will come in via Zoom. And because Tony House was there representing the commissioners, and we thought it would be, in order for us not to get two separate presentations, that we come together on a special meeting and get one presentation from the Army, so all of us can hear what we're hearing at the same time.
Thank you.
And I apologize if I made this more convoluted than I, I, it could have, should have been, but I just, I hate to come back and ask you for something that we have already discussed. And I'm just trying to make sure you understand that I wouldn't come back and ask this if I didn't think it was important.
And I'm sorry if I didn't get that.
No.
My apologies.
No apology needed, Les.
You either do.
You.
You.
Sure. Did you pose the question to them when you were talking with them? Is it sufficient for the city of Trinidad to get a statement of support for your white paper?
I did not. I, from what I'm understanding, each one of us have to do a white paper. But we'll find that out.
As a, as a point of respectful order, if we can kind of decide before it's that right to. I mean, do you have? And I'm sorry, Councilman Ogletree. Now, we're all sorry tonight. Anyway, I always appreciate everyone's questions and to, and to just state publicly for the record, I'm continually fearful that Councilman Ogletree will take all the good questions. But I would, I would strongly support that meeting. However, I think, as some people have stated, there's a pretty high, I have a high level of not understanding as to why we're needed in support. And if, I'll try and be super brief. When you look at the 2024 National Defense Budget versus the 2025 National Defense Budget, I looked it up, saw the actual passage, that money is point zero 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 five one percent of the 24 budget, and oddly, it's point zero 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 five one of the 2025 budget, because the numbers get that big, that's how they work. It, it's almost nothing to the national budget. And to Councilperson Shu's point, the Army needs it, the Army's requesting it, the gas company is going to interact with them, it's a monetary exchange, they give it, it happens. The most compelling point that I think you made, Mayor Grigo, is that a white paper by the federal look is viewed as area of influences support. And I think that's probably the most compelling argument. I would feel ill-advised to go out on a limb and as this body, while it's frequently, it is our mission in fact to represent our constituents to the best of our ability, but I think an issue of this magnitude would almost certainly warrant input from the community in, in large order. I think that would be important. Secondly, again, Councilman Shu said, we're quite a ways outside of their, in their area of influence. of influence. I, I don't understand the need for us to weigh in on this, but that may become evident at the meeting. And I'll admit, national defense is exceptionally important. I just don't see a white paper making a difference to this undertaking we have. But like I said, that may change at the meeting.
Well, you know, we're not even at the point where we're going to discuss actually issuing the white paper. I just want council to have the opportunity to listen to these gentlemen from Washington as I did. So as a simplicity, have both of us together so they can explain it once.
No, I.
And to your point about, you know, we're here for the community, this is our forum. So when it comes to that point, I'll spread the word that this is gonna happen and people can come and express what they want. We're not even at that point yet.
Well, I think when we, when they come and present, we can pose the question, is there a concern for, for our town and our county? If they do move that line, are we out of gas? Is that feeding us? Is there something that could impact us in one way or another? You know, and that's what the community's gonna wanna know, so at least we can answer that and get full clarification.
I know the answer to that question.
I just. But it's, it's.
But I would rather them answer it instead.
Yeah, 'cause then it's coming out of ours, and then it's coming out of them, it's more of a confirmation, I believe.
And, and, may I just speak?
No. Yet you mean.
I would like to have, if we are going to have them on the record, making representations as to how it will affect us economically, I'd like that on the record. But pass it in here.
Okay.
To have that on the record, so that we then have something to put into a white paper that the army has told us this is the effect it will have on our community, and for those reasons, we support it.
Okay. Yeah, right. Anybody else to beat this to death? Anybody? Okay, I need a motion to have a special meeting with the Los Anamos County Commissioners to discuss with the Washington DC experts about the white paper for Pinion Canyon Maneuver Site.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote.
Debono?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Schu?
Yep.
Thurman?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Truhell?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes. Item 8C, first reading of an ordinance granting local landmarking designation to the historic property which is located at 135 and a half North Anamos Street, City of Trinidad, Los Anamos County, Colorado, and setting a public hearing on October 1st, 2024 at 6:00 PM. I need someone to introduce.
I'll introduce it.
I need a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Debono?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Truhell?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes. Item 8D, first reading of an ordinance granting local landmark designation to the property known as the Trinidad Water Works located at 223 West Cedar Street, City of Trinidad, Los Anamos County, Colorado, and setting a public hearing on October 1st, 2024 at 6:00 PM. I need someone to, to introduce.
I'll introduce.
I need a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Williamson?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Truhell?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Debono?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes. Item 8E, professional services, professional services agreement for on-call engineering services with RG and Associates LLC, GMS Incorporated, and Engineering Analytics Incorporated. Hi, Mr. Just.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Mr. Nels, Mr. Nelson, Mrs. Davis. We had, we interviewed six engineering firms. When I say we, myself, Nadine, Gary Terry, the other directors, Mark Fee Hill, Steve Crowe, and Dave Bichica were involved in these interviews. And basically, what we're, we're trying to find an on-call engineer, is what the, was the purpose of these interviews. And at the end of the interviewing process, we found out that all these firms had a specialty that was unique to each department. For instance, GMS is, they're good in water, water transportation. So that was a big, you know, we liked them because, like I said, they, they had a specialty, a niche in that field. Boam and Mink, they're not on here tonight, we haven't got their agreement set up yet, but they had, they're a 3,000-person firm. When we get ready to do expansion on the wastewater plant and to meet the new requirements, they have that special niche that they'll be able to do that plant. As well as, some of the firms can do several things, but they all kinda have a special niche, so. Anyway, I come to you tonight to, for, to basically, for council's approval, to get these firms on as an on-call engineering. It doesn't cost us anything, we can sign all six firms. Like I said, it doesn't, it's just, if a project comes up and we have the ability to ask one, two, or all six of them if they wanna bid on it, I think that even puts us in a better situation, 'cause now we have, we know that these firms are pre-approved, that gives us the ability to hire an engineering firm that we already pre-interviewed. So that's what I, I'm seeking your approval for tonight.
Mr. Williamson, why don't you start over here?
Thank you, Mayor. Bob, a lot of times in industry, we use, end up using terms that aren't publicly understood, and worse off, that are very frequently publicly misunderstood. What does on-call engineering service mean specifically?
Typically, in the past, the city has had an on-call engineer. They could, they could call the engineer up and say, hey, Mr. Smith, we have a project. They don't have to go through the RFP process, 'cause they've already interviewed him. They're basically, we have all the contract that's written with them, we have their rate schedule, and it just saves a lot of time and we can get them on board to, to do the design. So what on-call means, it's basically, it's an engineer or a firm that's been approved for work.
Understood. So in some ways, that's increasing the city's agility in selecting a firm for potentially work that may be outside of our city's scope of expertise, I mean.
Correct.
And, and so in effect, by having those pre, pre-approved engineers that, that are specifically for certain disciplines, it, it may, may translate in a faster project turnaround and less time and a more expedient project completion and even.
Cost savings.
Yeah, cost savings. So I, I think that's something that's important to note. Mayor, I don't have any further questions, I just wanted to clarify potentially what that was for the public record.
Thank you.
Amen.
Kind of the same, but I'm gonna do a different approach. What about in-house versus firm? Would you rather have this in, have an in-house firm, or you wanna, do you wanna outsource this?
Well, we do have, I mean, you're talking to the city engineer.
Yeah, no, I can, I can say it.
So, and I have, you know, I have the staff to do a lot of projects that are, we have the ability to do a lot of projects, which we have, Central Park, First Street. This would be, for instance, like I said, the wastewater plant, we, it coming up, the last time we did a upgrade in it was around 2,000. It's coming down the line, and we're gonna have to have the special nutrient removals whatnot. We do not have the expertise in-house to do that.
Catch, that's what I'm driving at, that's what I'm.
We would have to hire a firm to do the design on the, to bring the plant in compliance.
That's what I was driving at, I was trying to figure what, what would it take to have this done in-house versus, but you're saying you don't have the expertise in.
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, I don't really have anything. I think it's a great idea to have them on retainer, 'cause when we have many jobs coming up, we've got a lot of projects in the works, can spread them out a little bit. And some of these projects that are coming that we've asked for are massive, you know, and things that are gonna be required in the future, we're gonna need somebody that's, that, that's versed in that development of the newer codes and the newer designs that they're wanting, plus somebody has to be free to do the jobs we're asking for. So I understand the need for this.
Frank?
Just about what Aaron said, I was about, yeah, what I was gonna ask you. So, yeah.
Bobby, when you outsource this on-call engineer, what's the price tag?
It's job-specific. Like I said, it doesn't cost anything to bring them on. They're basically sitting, we have them in reserve, it's a phone call away.
So this is all factored in?
You're right. So we may, if we have a project that comes up, for, for instance, wastewater plant expansion, we could ask three of them, four of them, and ask, they're all been approved, and now we can ask them specifically, you guys give us a fee to design the wastewater plant expansion, or the new water treatment plant that's been talked about, the below the dam. These are just potential projects. At that time, they get, they, all four of them, if we ask four of the six, they would give us a fee.
So these are all consulting engineers?
Yeah, that's correct, they're firms.
Got it.
Absolutely.
Okay.
The only question that I had at your question is, will they be limited by some budgetary requirement? I mean, when you guys do a project, you have a budget for that project. If you decide to go out, you know, to one of these firms, are they gonna be bound by that budget as well?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. I mean, there's X amount of dollars there to do that project, and if they come in and they say they need more money, then the project may not happen.
Okay.
Yeah, it, but it gives us just a little bit more flexibility, because now we have, they're kinda just being against themselves by having additional firms on-call.
I understand.
I tried, I kinda tried to explain that to Mr. Valentine. Usually in the past, the cities usually had just like one engineer on-call. It, like I said, it doesn't cost us anything to have all six on-call. We may not even use any of them. But if we have a project that comes up, we have the ability to ask one, all of them to bid on it.
That seems wise to me, thank you.
Mayor, may I ask one more?
Thank you very much, audience. I just wanted to make more of a statement as opposed to a question. I, I think it's important, though, that we note this in, in the public record before we vote on this. Something that came up was, you know, concern of cost, and I think it's really wise to talk about, but it's important to note that in every type of project, there's always, and I'm sure you can attest to this, there's always a specific known and predetermined percentage that the engineering is expected to fall within. So it's not as if the engineering comes in and we're totally shocked by that. So if you have six responses, which you'd be fortunate to get that, we can select the best value, which isn't always the cheapest, it may be, but it isn't always, and that's why we would rely on your expertise. Which is the last point that I wanted to make. It'd be unrealistic of us as a body to expect that we could bring this in-house when the, the disciplines of engineering are so myriad, that it, it would not be reasonable to expect that any one person would be able to be a qualified engineer for wastewater, stormwater, road, bridge, structural, geotech, any number of disciplines. I mean, we haven't even scratched the surface at this point. So what you're doing is called competitive tension, and it's the pursuit of many successful businesses, which the city has to run this, but what I'm saying is, it's a good plan and something that's needed, so, uh, thank you. That's my comment.
Any other? I would like to have a motion to accept the professional services agreement for on-call engineering with RG and Associates LLC, GMS Incorporated, and Engineering Analytics Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
Sarah, second.
The second.
Call the vote, please.
Debono?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Truhell?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great job, Bob.
Thanks, Bob. Item nine, council reports. Start with Aaron.
It's a long meeting, so I can make this short. I get the honor of serving on the advisory council for the college as well, so I got to meet with Dr. Ever, last week, and the other members of that group, and one thing that she expressed was a deep desire to work more closely with the city on economic development initiatives, including the emergent campus, which is gonna be located and is gonna be in the park school, the.
Park streets.
Yes, ma'am. There are, like, info, there's information that she needs from the city, including what's available out at the industrial park, so that when people call her and say, hey, we have this idea we'd like to do, do you have this kind of land? Does it have infrastructure? She doesn't have any idea of those things, and she doesn't know who to call, the city. But she would like to work more closely with us. Also, if any of those companies or companies that express interest in Trinidad need specific, specific training of their employees, that the college would like to be involved in those efforts. So, and I, I told her, yes, we want all that, and let's do this thing. She did suggest that the city look into something we've talked about before, which is having an economic development advisory council to the city, made up of people who have intelligent things to say about that in Trinidad, and that would be, and she would be a great person for that, I just think. And I, I think that's really wise. I think we do need to work on economic development, focus hard on that, and it would be helpful if we had a group of citizens telling us, this is what we need. That's all I have to say.
Who would she get a hold of, Mike?
So, I've got a note to call her, so I haven't called her back, but I, I'm sure that's what she wants to talk about, so I'll, I'll make that initial contact and.
See you later.
Yeah.
Thank you. Frank?
I, we had, we had an opera meeting, but I did, I had, there was no way I couldn't attend it. But I am talking to Rick this week, so next weekend, I mean, next weekend, yeah. Next week, I'll have a report on, on the update and for the rate changes and stuff.
Hispanic Chamber is doing, I can't say it, but it's, well, let's call it the Chili Festival.
It's D F E safe.
D F E safe.
Yes.
Yeah.
So the Chili, yeah. So what can you say Chili?
So it's celebrating Mexican Independence Day. But this year, we're doing something a little different. We got a green chili cook-off and a salsa contest. This is September 14th, from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Once again, we have ban, multiple bans. We're also gonna have, uh, sorry, got lost. Multiple bands, vendors, um, come down? Check it out.
Horseshoe and cornhole.
Horseshoe and cornhole, thank you, you got more of it.
I made it to the radio in the morning.
There you go, yeah, it's like, I was trying to memorize it, I couldn't get it, but yeah, it's gonna be a great time, love to see everybody down there. My other meeting is not until tomorrow, Friday at 10:00.
Thank you.
No reports.
I have three items, and Mayor, I will try to be super brief.
Oh, yeah.
Just to time you. I, I can't time you. So I wanted to thank everybody for their energy and efforts on the homeless and vagrancy issues work session. I think that's something that we really need to continue and pursue. We owe that to our constituents, and I know, I know that we all agree on that, so thank you. Councilman Ogletree, I was speaking to a few people this week, and I really, if, if I misremembered the gist of what you were saying, I'm sorry, but I think that it would be really a good idea, I think, to have a specific. Um, Councilman Ogletree, I was speaking to a few people this week and I really, if, if I misremember the gist of what you were saying, I'm sorry, but I think that it would be really a good idea, I think, to have a specific work session, and I know we always say work session, work session, work session, but, um, it would be a great idea to have a work session specifically geared to, um, what we can do to increase the attractiveness of Trinidad to generate revenue. And, um, I have several, uh, ideas and I think they're well-formulated and, and I don't want to try and go through the scope of them with you guys tonight. It's already been a long meeting and we have a ways to go still. Um, so i- if we can work that into a work session somewhere. And then I think ahead of that work session, it'd be a good idea to determine ahead of time using collective input of staff and council of what, uh, partner should be there. Um, the last thing, and it's, I think this may be a concerted effort, but I want to respond to it. Um, there's, I think it would be a really valuable thing to have some sort of community engagement for city council, and I'll admit that we already do a ton. Um, so many people and so many boards and it's, it takes a long time to prepare for the meeting to get that. But, um, I was thinking if we had some sort of booth at the, maybe not even every, um, uh, farmer's market, but some farmer markets, I mean, there's, there's seven of us, if you include the city manager, which Mike, we're hoping to, for your sake, transition you quickly, um, so this would not affect you, but including the city manager, there's eight. So if we did every second week, that would be every 16 weeks of the farmer's market, we could occupy a booth and meet with constituents. If we did every week, it'd be every eighth week, if, if you follow my map there. Just an idea, I think it's something we should discuss, uh, to just keep a pulse on constituents in the city, but except for Frank, he has a pulse just through his day-to-day interacting. I said that because I could see your thinking. That's all I have, Mayor. Jesus, that was the shortest one we ever had. I tried to decide.
I have nothing. I, I already gave you my spiel from the, um, meeting at Pinion Canyon. I will tell you though, it's, I got a call today from Matt Gonzalez, Richard Gonzalez, who's a, uh, animal control, had a double lung transplant, uh, street. And he's on the west route, yeah.
Good.
And he's breathing on his own. So I talked to his wife today and they're going to move him into a private room, so he's progressing very well. And in addition to, uh, an update on Rich, he asked me, evidently there was a tradition in Trinidad, just before the rat tone in Trinidad minor football game, the mayor's supposed to come and give a pep, talk to the football.
Nice.
So guess who's going to talk to the football team next?
The mayor.
The mayor.
Nice. Yeah, exactly.
So I, I will do my best, um, to try and motivate, you know, yeah.
You gotta win. I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
Yeah, yeah. But that's all I have. Uh, reports by city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. It's a, I'm a week and a day in. There's a lot going on and contrary to what was said, your staff is amazing and they, they keep up on a lot of things and, and just a lot of balls in the air and they're keeping it going, so I just wanted to say that. The transition back has been easier because of them. Um, it's not easy, easier. Um, second thing is, uh, I know that Steve reported that our property and casualty insurance could be upwards of $400,000. Well, Audra received the quote and it is going to be under 50,000.
Wow.
So there was, uh, the inspector that came around and looked at the city, relayed a message to our chief and said, based on everything he sees, it could be 400. It's not. Uh, the quote is under five, uh, under 50,000, 48,260.
Did they forget zero?
No, that's what, that's what I heard around here is like, but anyway, one thing, caveat is the thousand dollar deductible on property is going to 5,000. Um, there's also a possibility of savings by analyzing the work comp and raising that deductible, but staff is looking at how many claims we have and whether it's worth, I think, savings of around 23,000. So there's a, there's a balance there, but we're, I was very happy to hear one less zero. Not 400,000, but
May I ask you a question, Mayor?
Yeah.
May I ask you a question? Mike, I, I suspect you probably don't have this, um, number in front of you, but, and probably the mayor knows what that number is called, but there's a number that compares our industry to other like industries for insurance?
Well, we buy it from Cersa.
Cersa is
Okay. So we're in, we're aggregated with them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, one of the
Never mind then.
One of the things I heard from, in the conversations was that the gentleman told the chief, you may want to have to, may want to look for another insurance, but because of that, it's like, oh, wait a minute. Yeah. So, so this is good news.
No, great.
In, uh, in that. Um, the other thing is at your sitting place, the Jacobs who operates our, uh, water, uh, wastewater plant and collections is, uh, provided the 2023 annual report. So it's just there for looking at, it's, got some interesting numbers and, um, hours of, of operation, just, just a lot of, uh, information for you. They even won an award from the Colorado Rural Water Association for the operations. It was an award-winning facility, so, um, great to hear. Uh, I think they're previous, when I was here, they're doing a great job and obviously it's continuing on, so. Um, other than that, I have nothing else.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you. Mayor and council members, the only thing I want to report on is that we're going to be having a special meeting, um, before the work session next week, a, a special meeting, executive session. And so please look, we don't know what the agenda is looking like for the work session yet, so we may be asking if you can meet a little bit early on Monday. Not sure about that. We hope that we won't have to ask for that, but just want to let you know, I know sometimes we're caught unaware by, you know, not regular time for a meeting, so we will let you know. I just want to let all of you know that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Item 11, executive session 11A for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal files. Civil questions under CRS 24-6-4024, meeting boards and commissioners. Motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Debono?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Thurman?